Called over the special call meeting, municipal city council, Monday, June, January the eighteenth, two thousand sixteen. Call the roll please.
Bill Mike.
Here.
Tommy.
Here.
David. Jim.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
And Sean.
Uh, any additions or corrections to the minutes of the meeting of December fourteenth?
Yeah, uh, actually, I mean, I don't know if it's that big a deal or not, but it says, uh, um, Sean made the motion at after, at the end of the meeting, if you'll remember when I made the motion, we go ahead and advertise the surplus of deed.
Okay.
If you remember when I brought that up at the end of that last meeting.
Yeah. Okay, so it should be.
I mean, I don't know if it matters or not, but.
Well, we'll make the correction.
I don't always get them.
Uh.
But fast.
Right above verge of your signature line, about two paragraphs of that.
So you made the motion, is what you're saying?
Right.
Did Jim second? Jim seconded?
I think he did.
Yeah, I did, I believe so.
Okay.
As I said, why didn't we go ahead and agree?
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
That's right.
I'll change it.
Yeah, I agree.
We have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, any questions or comments concerning departmental reports?
I'll make the motion, we approve those departmental reports.
I'll second it.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
I also need another.
No?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm very with him now.
So we. We got, uh, just give us a roll call on that, please.
Which one were you, department reports?
Departmental reports.
Bill Mike.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yeah.
Jim.
No.
And Sarah.
No.
And Sean?
Oh, I'm sorry, Sean?
Yes.
Out of curiosity, was there, was there a reason for that or?
Just don't feel comfortable with it, that's it, that's all, that's the whole thing.
Okay, we asked why you don't feel comfortable, is that?
I, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna elaborate, Bill Mike, that's why I don't feel comfortable.
Okay.
I don't know.
Next item of business is the, uh, approval to pay bills. Now, we do have one bill that I'd like to get, uh, bring before council, uh, which is kinda unusual, but we'll do it anyway, since it's, since it's a bill to Creason Company, uh, for, uh, for work. Joe, are you here? Joe, can you explain what that work was for? This bill's for seven thousand dollars.
Where we replaced a thirty-six inch five, uh, golden gate, where the air conditioning, that old high tension fire line was that, that's a four hundred feet, uh, thirty-six inch five.
Um.
I still don't think I got what he said.
Uh.
Well, Joe, just speak up a little louder.
Down north gate, we had a thirty-six inch five collapse, up there was a high tension fire line was that.
Uh-huh.
And some deep back end dig with backhoe.
Oh, so you had to get some equipment in there.
Okay, excavator.
Excavator.
We had to get something, whole wall.
Gotcha.
Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me.
We have a motion to.
No, we saw excavators and backhoes, yeah.
We have a motion to approve the, uh, bills, including that particular bill.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
I, I, I'm, 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 I'm gonna put on there, I have, as the bill's as presented, I tell you, that's what I'm, on my vote.
Bills as.
As presented, yeah.
Well, that wasn't the motion, uh.
I know, but I'll, I'll say with that on, with that issue, I'm.
Well, the.
Well, Tommy already seconded it, so we weren't, we didn't need your second.
Okay, well, I wasn't talking about seconding, I was just talking about.
The, uh.
My vote.
Well, you probably need to vote no. Uh, all, all in favor, let me say one more time.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm not gonna oppose it, but I was gonna just get that out there.
All right, so, I'm not sure what that, okay. Uh. The, uh. There'll be no announcements this evening, uh, we'll move straight to the business, uh, first item of business, presentation, presentation of the audit report.
Stay right here, I'm gonna, how you want me to stay? Uh, down here, hopefully everybody who's got a copy got it, I get, uh, hopefully they had the weekend to kind of, kind of review it and so forth. And I've got the audit for the city for the year in June thirty, two thousand fifteen. My opinion on this audit, on the financials is a unmodified opinion, that the financial statements in here present fairly the financial position of the city of Paintsville as of June thirty, two thousand fifteen. And what I will do is I'll just kinda go over a few numbers with you, you know, I don't wanna throw a bunch of numbers, I probably will, that I thought from these people. Anyway, you go to page seven, this is basically what, we'll go over the, uh, the revenues and expenses for the general fund. I, I need the Paintsville tourism tomorrow, so I'll go over their numbers tomorrow, and everything, and so basically I'll focus on general funding. Total revenues for the year were five million, seven hundred thirty-four thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars. Total expenditures were six million, seven thousand, four hundred and two dollars. You had an excess of expenditures over revenues of two hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars, and I'm gonna explain some, it doesn't really appear as badly as it does, but I'll explain that in just a few minutes. Uh, you had, uh, other financing sources, you had transfers in from tourism, hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. You had about eighteen thousand, hundred thirty-four dollars from insurance proceeds, and you had seven hundred sixty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars of proceeds from borrowings. That brought you a change in fund balance of an increase for the year of six hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars. That enabled the city to get out of the red position they were in as of June thirty fourteen, when you was in the, had a deficit of eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and six dollars. You now have a fund balance of five hundred eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And I can explain a lot of that increase in fund balance was due to the working capital loan you got, five hundred thousand dollar loan you got from the payment bank to pay off all those delinquent past accounts payments and so forth. That was the biggest chunk, that's probably why you was able to get out of your fund deficit. But going back to the, uh, you, you see that negative two hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars. Now, the mayor and I was talking about this the other day, capital outlays that you see there above that, three hundred sixty thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars. Now, some of that, most of that was, uh, paid with grants and some of this, the remaining now that loan proceeds. So you subtract five hundred thousand from that, seven hundred sixty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars. That was two hundred sixty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars that went towards the purchase of equipment, uh, and other things. I think you had the Mesa loan that went for the new air conditioning units out the rec center, uh, golf course, and I think at the city hall, borrowed a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars for any garbage truck, and twenty-five thousand dollars for a new pickup truck for the street department. So if you factor that out, knowing that some of that loan money paid for the capital outlays right there, if you add two hundred sixty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars back to that two hundred seventy-two thousand deficit, or excess of expenditures over revenue, that's about six thousand dollar, six thousand dollar negative that you have in the year, which is about two hundred thousand dollars than you had better than the prior year. So, you know, y'all most considering that factor, about broke even, uh, as far as revenues coming in and expenditures going out. Um, some things that I know, I know fuel costs this past year have gone way down, uh, due to the cost of gas and so forth like that. So, but anyway, that's, that's a good sign, but now there are some things, but there is one other thing, you have, that's about six thousand dollars there, but if you look at on page, page fifty-four, nine one one fund, and this has been the situation for the last seven, eight years, it's not bringing enough revenues to cover the expenditures of that, that, uh, for nine one one. Nine one one had an eighty-four thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollar deficit last year, so that is being picked up by the general fund to cover those expenses. So even though you had six thousand, it looks like about six thousand dollar deficit, you also might as well tack that on to it, so. And that's probably gonna be the case going forward until, until something happens to nine one one, you can find some extra revenues and so forth. And I talked with mayor, and you probably need to start budgeting any of your general fund, you know, which is on nine one one that they're gonna have in the future, so. Um, quickly, and the mayor and I talked about this the other day, uh, nine one one is still a problem for y'all, just, you know, you just can't bring enough revenues to fund that thing, and ambulance, of course, and golf course. Past year, the ambulance department brought in, well, it was just, bottom line is, they showed about ninety-two thousand dollar loss on more expenses than revenues last year. So, I mean, it's same as it has been all, most of the past years, and it runs right around that hundred thousand dollar mark. Uh, the golf course, it was bringing in, and this includes sixty-five thousand dollars from money from the tourism that covered those expenses. You still, it's showing a deficit of a hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars, you know, so it's not gonna bring enough revenue to cover its costs on its own. So that's where, again, the general fund is covering those costs, you know, from other proceeds, makes, you know, operate the golf course and ambulance. So, but again, I just wanna tell you that those are probably the three areas that are concerned for the city, golf course, ambulance, and nine one one, so. Um, over on page five, you'll see your, uh, assets and liabilities. You'll notice your accounts payable this year, as of June thirty, two thousand fifteen, is a hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars, about three hundred thousand of decline from the prior year. Or you borrowed the money from first con with the bank, it caught up on all the past bills, so that's the reason that it declined. And also, your accrued retirement, it was ninety-nine thousand dollars prior year, is forty-eight thousand. You had two, you had May and June on the prior year's financials, 'cause you was behind one month on those, so you caught up on that. So you can see your total fund balance is, like I said earlier, five hundred eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Um. The one other thing, the other report that you report on internal control and compliance, I mean, you found no issues with compliance this year, you was caught up on your bills as you won the findings of last year's audit that you were more than thirty days past due on some invoices and so forth, of course, you caught up on bills now. Um, and the other course, the, the other finding that's always gonna be in there is the lack of segregation of duties notes. This is a single audit, so, uh, the federal money that was tested, the major program that was tested was the AML money for Paintsville utilities. That's the only one here, that was the only, uh, major program that you tested, and every, of course, that was tested when I did the Paintsville utilities audit, that was fine there. So, that's all I have, uh. Each city's got their own deficit, the only deficit that you're gonna handle is nine one one, and the mayor and I discussed this the other day, you about three hundred, nine one one owes general fund three hundred and two thousand dollars, which has been accumulating since six, seven years ago. So I don't know, talking to mayor, putting this forward, at some point, you're probably gonna figure that nine one one's never gonna be able to repay that to the general fund, and it might be a situation where the general fund might just say, they're just gonna have to eat that, and, uh, clear it off the books of the, uh, nine one one, and it just show it as an expenditure part of the general fund, so, but that'd be something for y'all to think about, because it's never, my opinion is it's never gonna get paid off.
Now, we're, we're, we continue to hope and pray that the legislature will, will do something to, uh, to improve that situation. Realistic, realistically, probably not.
No, but I think every city and every community that's running nine one one is running the same issue, there's just no revenue, and so, you know, at, at some point, you just have to, uh, make some kind of, uh, assumptions that this is what it's gonna cost you to run the services, to save the deficit.
Now, we've gotten quite a few grants for equipment, but just the operating costs.
Yeah, I mean, just manpower, take two men, two people down there, so.
The revenue, the, the. It's run by revenue from land, from a landline tax and, and cell phone tax, and the landlines continue to decrease. And the legislature keeps fooling with issues, how to get the, the, uh, revenue up on the cell phones, because they don't care, really carry their proportionate share, because of the way the laws are written, so they keep saying they're gonna fix that, but, uh, we haven't seen it yet.
Well, if you didn't have a nine one one, what, that would just be, be calling the police?
Probably have to use, uh, state police dispatch. Yeah, you just call, uh, the state police number, whatever it'd be, probably a pipe one number, and they have a dispatch, I think some, some places do that.
Yeah, I'd hate to see us get to that point, I don't think we're at that point yet now, but I mean, you know, obviously, you know, dollars, dollars, and you know, if you're gonna lose two hundred and fifty, you know, then you're gonna, you know, examine it with what other services you're offering to the community and weigh those, but I, I, we're not there yet, but I think that that's definitely something to consider, you know, whether you abandon it or, or what you do, but, uh, we're not there yet. So how do we increase nine one one fees?
Well, the problem with the landline fees is the county has to agree to increase them as well as the city, and that has been some.
What do you mean the county, you mean fiscal court?
Fiscal court, yes, and that's something that they're, uh, pretty reluctant to raise any fees.
Has that been mentioned to you?
Not in a while, but, uh, but yes, it has, it's been a while.
But it seems like there was. What page is that on? But it seems like there was a comment in the paper made the other day that I read. Sean, if you don't mind your.
I'm sorry.
That, that, there was a comment made in the paper that the city doesn't have a revenue problem, they've got a spending problem. Yes, I remember that comment well. So, we have to go through fiscal court to raise nine one one fees?
Yes.
Well, 'cause the county, I mean, we, we, obviously, it's the landlines and the entire county, right? Right, right, I, I understand that, but I, I just, it, it baffles me why that comment would've been made.
And landlines keep going down and down.
Yeah. Is there still a, a nine one one board, bud? I mean, do they still, I know you used to, there was one that, you know, met and put their input, and I guess county and city is both supposed to be done, right?
Well, uh, they're just in advisory capacity.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, they.
We haven't met, we haven't met in a while on that, Jim, and the last time we did, that, that we, we, what we kept running into, to back up and give a little history on nine one one, which you're probably aware of, the, uh, when nine one one was installed, the, uh, it was a county-city, uh, operation, but the county, city and the county both agreed that it couldn't be jointly managed. Uh, it was impossible, and, uh, so the, uh, city agreed to manage it at that time, and take responsibility for future, for future, uh, costs. And therefore, that, it's easy for the, it's easy for the county to go back to that, uh, agreement that was signed back twenty years ago, or however long it's been.
Yeah.
And, uh, say, no, y'all, y'all agree, you were gonna, you were gonna fund it from here on out, in return for managing it, and I'd actually, uh, uh, offered to, uh, kinda given it some, oh, three, four, or five years ago, that we'd be happy to let them manage it, if they'd assumed the, assumed the cost and they, they didn't want any part of that, so, so we just.
Was that agreement, how long was that agreement good for? I mean, just forever?
Yeah.
I don't think it had a, I don't think it had a time limit on it.
Yeah, and I don't know, we might put our crack legal staff on trying to, trying to see if that, if that agreement can be, uh, adjusted somehow legally, but, uh, but we're kinda.
When was that agreement made, mayor, by the way? Was that like years?
I think it was Rob, Robin was mayor, I believe, at the time, uh, back in the, uh. Probably back in the nineties, uh, sometime.
Well, you said that cell phones, they were taxed also, the, we were getting, and everybody, when they dropped their landline, they picked up a cell phone, you know?
Yeah, yeah, they're not, but they're not carrying their proportionate share, the, the fees on the cell phones are different, and they go through the state and then come to us, and, and the fees.
So, and, and, and looking at page fifty-four here on the revenue, I'm just curious, two hundred ninety-three thousand, uh, the, I assume from landline, where is the money coming in, you're saying we're getting, receiving money from the state, where's that coming in at? So that's the total, when you say nine eleven fund, that's total landline and then our contribution to the state for cell phones?
Right.
And.
Yeah, do you remember?
I'm just curious how they determine it.
Well, I think, I think it's probably, uh, we've got a. In the nine one one, uh, report, financial report, you've got a breakdown on that. And so far this year, we've gotten, uh, eighty-four thousand, one sixty-two from, uh, from landlines and sixty-two thousand from, uh, wireless.
Okay.
So it's about sixty, forty at this point.
Yeah. I don't know, I mean, do we, do we at least make a request of the county for a rate increase on the nine one one? I mean, how does that work?
Well.
Do we meet with them, or we?
Yeah, we could do that, we could make a, uh, we could make a request, uh, uh, be happy to do that.
Okay.
They use it as much as we do, don't they?
More, I, I, the county gets more.
I'd say more.
I ha, I haven't looked at that in a long time, but.
Man, I, I don't know, I don't know how to form it in the form of a motion, but I mean, uh, what, I don't know what the rate currently is, so I don't know what to raise it up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to remember, I'm thinking.
But I mean, if it's, if, if we're two nine, two hundred ninety-three thousand, well, actually.
The dollar seventy-three cents per, per landline now, per month.
Okay, well, currently, for nine one one, I mean, for the nine one one fund, we're, we're taking in four hundred thou, four hundred and seven thousand, and we're spending four hundred, and based on this fiscal year that we were thought, looking at this audit, four hundred eighty-six, so you're looking at pretty much at twenty percent. Total expenditure, I'm looking here.
It's underneath the nine, nine one one.
Okay, all right, so eighty-four, okay. So that's still, that's still pretty much twenty percent.
Yeah.
Right? You're the accountant, Jim.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I make a motion that we send a request to the, uh, fiscal court that we'd like to raise nine one one fund twenty percent to cover the deficit.
To how much, twenty?
Twenty percent, increase twenty percent.
Twenty percent. It's a dollar seventy-three now, so that'd be, uh.
Whatever.
Thirty, thirty-five more.
Yeah, whatever it'd be.
I'm good with that.
So we got the motion on the floor.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We shall do it.
Okay.
All right.
All right, now let's talk about the ambulance service, we'll be.
Yep.
Okay? So, I'd like to know the percentage of county outside city limits that you serve as opposed to what you serve in the city.
I'm trying to figure that, just in the last month or two, and I figured it's, but I think it was somewhere around sixty-four.
All right, so you're talking about sixty county and forty city?
The reason that it, that it's hard to determine is because we have transfers that come out of Halby Hall that would go towards the city's percentage. When, when they're actually maybe counted.
Where it's got, right.
And it's, it's kinda hard to put a, an exact number, but it's somewhere around sixty-four.
Okay, so sixty county, forty city. And according to your numbers, we're losing how much in the ambulance, I mean, ambulance?
About ninety-two thousand, in two, two thousand fifteen.
And that's been pretty consistent, I think, around the hundred thousand mark, a little more sometimes, a little less, and, uh.
Well, what's the solution there, uh, you know, I mean, two, two meetings ago, I, I, or last meeting, uh, you were, I know you were busy, but, you know, I, I threw up to the mayor, you know, can you have a, kinda wave a magic wand and figure out how we fix this problem, but, you know?
Part of that, I, I think, and, and we had discussed it, was maybe where we wasn't getting, and, and Kim may be able to tell us more about this. On our incentive, uh, the amount of incentive, I've not been able to find where that was showing, that's just passed through from the state, right?
Oh.
And then another thing that, that I've done, I may have to beg forgiveness for it, but, uh, we have been building, just in the last month or two, uh, facilities, in other words, it takes a proper documentation in order for us to not get denied from the insurance company. And if the reason we don't get denied, or the reason we get denied is because of a, a facility that didn't provide the proper paperwork, for instance, a, a, a proper physician certification statement, which is required, uh, them providing us with pre-authorization number from most all the Medicaid carriers, uh, we're building the facility.
Are there facilities that are, or, are egregious than others, I mean, are they, they're frequent offenders to providing you the necessary paperwork?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, and maybe these are facilities that we no longer support?
Well, it's, it's, that's kind of a, kind of an impossibility.
Well, I mean, yeah, increasing, increasing revenue or decreasing expenditure, one of the two have to happen for us to have a balance, you know, to some extent, and, and maybe there's never a balance, but at least not a hundred thousand dollar.
Yeah.
Difference, and so, you know, and, and I know that you and I have had some conversations as far as manpower, and, and you know, maybe tweaked maybe a little bit here and there, but still, what else can we do?
And we did that.
Yeah.
We made all the cuts we can possibly make.
Okay, okay.
And, uh, our, our transfers, you know, we're no longer going to Lexington every, you know, two, three times a day, most people are being transferred to Pipehole or, uh, uh, Ashland or Huntington, because the insurance company won't pay for it. Somebody's got a cardiac, if their, if their cardiologist is in Lexington, and they're established with them, sure, we can transport them, but half of the mileage is gonna be, have, have to be paid privately, because the insurance company won't do it. And we, for the longest time, was having problems with facilities understanding it, you know, places, nobody else cares if we get paid. My opinion is, if we, if we turn a wheel, you know, Medicaid is just gonna pay a hundred and ten dollars for an ALS transport, plus three dollars a mile, or maybe four dollars a mile, which from here to Pipehole is not a lot, a hundred dollars. And that's a three-year trip, anyway you look at it, by the time you log the patient up, get up there, and get back. And, uh, you know, we, we've decided that if, if we're being denied by insurance because of the paperwork that should've been done by the facility, we're gonna build the facility.
Yeah.
And, 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 and still get, it should be determined how that's gonna work out.
What's the turnover time, right, for, like, you take, you take a patient, what's the turnover time from the time you take them to the time that you start to, you bill them? How, how many, how long does it take you to do that? Do you do it every, at the end of every day, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and our, our billing is, is done all that chronic, so it, it's not that it's not in there. For instance, Medicaid is not paying anything, they just started paying it a year, uh, since the beginning, and it may be, I've got some, some reports that's probably six or eight months out, because if you send a bill to Medicaid, they're gonna turn around and deny it, they're gonna find some reasons to deny it, and then our billing company turns around and rebuilds it, however many times it takes, and then I, I just hope if we've got, if we've got a physician certification statement that is not filled out properly, that's not our fault. So that's why we.
So you feel, you, you all feel a man, at the end of the day, in a timely manner, it's just you don't, you're having a hard time getting it back, and some. So, you feel, you, you all feel a man, at the end of the day, in a timely manner, it's just you don't, you're having a hard time getting it back, and sometimes it goes, they were denied, you have to go back again, or something, okay?
Right.
Don't say anything stupid.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, Rick, don't those things go in, really, ad, as soon as you make the run, the information goes into the computer, it's in the ambulance, and then, and then goes directly.
And that's helped us on our car accidents, because you've got PIP, Personal Injury Protection, and, and however much that's allowed, uh, on an accident, we want to get our bill in first so that we get our revenues before anybody else.
I'm just curious, go ahead, sorry.
That's really, that's really increased our, 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 the amount that we get paid from our vehicle accidents.
Okay, the, uh, company that we use, I mean, pretty much, we pay them, uh, a percentage of their collection for, the billing company, I don't know what their name is, I don't have it in front of me, but my guess is that pretty much our deficit, if you weren't paying them, we would have no deficit. I'm just wondering what some of the other communities, I mean, do you have any idea, do you have any idea what Pipepool's doing, or, you know, press record, do they use it?
Pipepool's using the same billing company.
Okay.
So, now, since the first of last year, everybody had to go to electronic billing. And if you remember, there was some agencies that got in some trouble, because they had their in-house billing.
Some agencies close to us.
So, now, everybody is doing the electronic billing, and some of those that got in trouble had to go to outside billing.
I guess it's just a-
In-house billing is just virtually a thing of the past, pretty well something that-
It's, it's very difficult to keep up with all the changes and regulations and laws and so forth.
I was just thinking if you could partner with, I mean, if we're paying, you know, this billing company a hundred thousand dollars, and we're going the whole hundred thousand dollars, if you partnered with another municipality and said, hey, let's pay somebody fifty thousand dollars to do the billing, but it's probably a lot more, you know, a lot harder than I'm assuming, yeah, alright. Well, I, I don't know how you fix this, I mean-
Well, let's ask one more question.
Okay, go ahead, I know what you, I know where you're going, but go ahead.
Let's ask one more, if, if you didn't have to service the county, and only the city, do you think you would have this deficit?
Uh, probably not as much. But I don't know how much it would.
That's all I need to know, buddy. Thank you. I'm done.
Alright. Go back to the city, Rick, you're going back to BLS too, aren't you still there?
No, it'd be, it's going to still be ALS, but what we would, what we would have to do is, is instead of having three trucks on, probably two, maybe sometimes one. Because we've got to try every way we can to make sure we've got vehicles available. Uh, and we can't even, if we've just got one ambulance available, uh, in the county, and a transfer comes in, and that transfer has to wait, or we have to call somebody in, or we have to wait to get a truck, cleared up, because we can't leave the, the county available. So, it's, it's sort of a, sort of a, a hard thing to balance, because it, nothing is, is certain, you know, you may have four hundred runs this month, you may have five hundred runs next month. Uh, you may have twenty-five transfers this month, you may have fifty next month. But I think if we can get the facilities where they will provide us with proper documentation, and we don't get denied for those calls, I think we can close that, that gap.
Well, I personally think you're doing a great job.
Absolutely. I don't see how you're going to do without that, first, I've always been that, I've always been my finger, and I know that, we have a lot in the rearers, and I know that, and I don't know, Jim, if you, if you know what we got in the rearers, but if we had even part of that, Rick, it would close this deficit quite a bit, we've gone over this, I know, I know, I know, but if we had, you know, if we were collecting what we should be, get to collect, then we should not be in the rearers as bad, right?
At all, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
No.
That's a big issue.
Would we be in the back?
I understand that.
Would we not be in the back?
And, but the thing is, what are you going to do if you don't have an amb, we don't have this ambulance service in this county, you understand what I'm saying, this city? I mean, because, all of you all, I sort of, and I call, I want you all to come and get me, I can tell you that, so.
The, the thing that a lot of people forget about too, with the ambulance, instead of have, us having two firefighters on duty, uh, we have the two firefighters on duty, plus ambulance crews that are certified firefighters. If you remember, not long ago, we got a, a pretty good ISO rating. That was, that was a, a big chunk of it was, because of our personnel and stuff that they have to go through. Can I say that it's ever going to be a, a, something that we could, you know, a cash cow or something, not with the way the government's done with insurance?
My family's using flash, and I should appreciate it.
Alright.
Let me say this, Mayor, before we go on.
Alright, go ahead.
You guys do a great job, a great job, but I get tired of people complaining about annexation and getting service for what they don't have to pay for.
Well, they have to pay for it if they don't.
No, 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 we pay those guys, the city does.
Yeah, we pay them.
Not the county.
Yeah, but when they make the run, they pay that fee.
Okay, so, I just want to tell you you're doing a great job, and I just wanted to make that point, Mayor?
Could we have a motion to approve the audit, please?
I made said motion.
Is there a second there?
Sarah's second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Jim. Uh, next item on the agenda is sidewalk repair proposal from Precision Concrete Cutting, is that right?
That's correct, sir. Good evening, everybody. I'm Mr. Shawnee, I'm going to help you call it Precision Concrete Cutting. First and foremost, I want to apologize, I'm just getting over a little bit of a cold, so I coughed a little bit, sorry. Uh, I'm just going to take a few minutes of the council's time, and again, thank you for allowing me to come and speak today, especially Mayor, thank you so much. And I'm going to give just a small presentation of a possible pilot project of what our company does. Um, to kind of be extremely efficient, we understand, we give several city council presentations, and we understand how time is valuable. So, I'd like to show a video before we get started, and, and, uh, which is, talks a little bit about us, it's only four minutes in length, and then I'm going to talk about a specific, uh, presentation I'd like to, to show. Um, gentlemen, would it be okay if I asked you to just kind of scoop one way or the other, because, uh, unfortunately, because of logistics of the room, we're going to use that part of the blinds?
So, you want me to go that way or this way?
We're going to go right through the blinds as our, our projector, and if anybody can turn off these bigger lights and just, oh, wonderful, okay, awesome. Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am, uh, and I'll, and if, if this is one of the switches, sir?
I'll take that.
Perfect. You guys are perfect. Just going to turn this right on. Now, again, as I mentioned, my name is Shawnee, and I work with Precision Concrete Cutting, we're the leaders in not even sidewalk repair. We actually own the technology that you're about to see on the screen, and we're actually a verified sole source vendor. We are a, uh, we're, uh, we're across the country, however, I represent the Kentucky desk, which is also a better known and operated desk as well, so. Show this real quick. There we go, and. Please hold all your questions till the end.
Last year alone, cities and private property managers paid out over one hundred million dollars in sidewalk-related trip and fall accidents and compliance violations to the Americans with Disabilities Act. Precision Concrete Cutting has the unique ability to repair trip hazards at a fraction of the cost of removing and replacing-
One of, one of our technicians, and their setup looks like, we're extremely small footprint.
Our patented system and equipment delivers precision trip hazard removal, minimal impact, and ADA compliant results every time. Here's how. ADA requires that there be no change in level between two sidewalk panels.
And what you're seeing there is our proprietary survey interface that we have, and we've developed- Please note the time elapsed on the top right hand corner of the screen.
Once the cut is marked, rather than grinding, we use our patented equipment to surgically cut the necessary concrete and eliminate the trip hazard.
Also, we do have a dusting system that you see in use right there.
This precision concrete cutting technician removed a trip hazard measuring an inch and a half high and five feet in length in only eighteen minutes. On average, we have a cost savings of eighty percent compared to alternative methods, and we can remove up to fifty hazards per technician per day without closing sidewalks, using heavy equipment, or disrupting residents. With Precision Concrete Cutting, you can stretch your budget and cover more area, all while increasing safety. Precision Concrete Cutting uses proprietary technology and resources to ensure the highest quality and detail. Precision Concrete Cutting's environmentally friendly solution is a truly reduce, reuse, and recycle approach.
We're actually a part of the US Building National Green Council, we are a verified green company.
Reduce the waste and impact of the repair, and recycle the concrete removed.
Goes across Kentucky roads, made some projects across government.
You save money from the reduction of trip and fall accidents.
And we can also provide an intensive, uh, complete sidewalk inventory of the entire area.
Our trip hazards with our sidewalks are a big issue, we've had a lot of accidents occur. Rather than replacing the sidewalk a hundred percent, we've taken on with Precision Concrete Cutting the trip hazards down. We found that it is a big benefit to the city with the cost that it's saving us, and it also is taking away the trip hazards, which is the main reason we're having them come out, so it's working real well. Probably the biggest benefit we see is we can get immediate response and have that sidewalk open within hours versus days. It's a quick mitigation to a serious problem, I mean, that's what's great about Precision, it's money well spent.
Our sidewalk program with Precision has been beneficial in the fact that they're able to make repairs that we cannot, and we estimate they save us about a hundred thousand dollars a year by using their method over the replace and repair method.
My name is Chris McGeary, I'm the Transportation Service Services Manager for the City of Raleigh. We've been able to go around half the city, and we have evaded the trip hazards that we could with the Precision process. The benefit is, we have a reduced number of calls, um, from the public complaining about issues with their sidewalks. So, these group of people are very excited about having us come in and use this process rather than just rip out a hundred feet of sidewalk. The experience I've had with Precision has been phenomenal, and this is by far one of the best contracts I've ever had a part of.
They've really done an outstanding job of working with our residents and our businesses here in the city, as well as the staff here in Beverly Hills. As of today, we cut about eighty percent of all of our sidewalks. Overall, this work has really been a giant success for the city.
Using Precision Concrete Cutting will extend your budget, and it's one of the few projects that receives compliments from residents and patrons. The choice is clear, to successfully eliminate trip hazards, choose superior quality, ADA compliance, cost savings, and increased safety. Choose Precision Concrete Cutting and its affiliates.
Thank you so much for your attention on that video, now, what I'd like to do right now is just go over, uh, a few things, uh, regarding what our process entails. Uh, as a general, as a narrator spoke during the video himself, mentioned that we do have a proprietary, uh, yeah, sorry.
Sorry about that.
Excuse me. We do have a proprietary, what that means is, we actually invented horizontal sidewalk cutting, or horizontal concrete sidewalk cutting, and we do have it patented, we actually are a verified US federal patent office, and actually, several of our clients across the Commonwealth, we recently were just awarded a five-year contract with the City of Louisville to do all of the, um, all of the concrete sidewalk repair that can be done within the City of Louisville, as well as done a lot of work with, um, uh, we just did a large project in Ashland, uh, here in their downtown area. Uh, also, as well, several schools, municipalities, so, we actually work with everybody, and the plain thing above all else is this, ADA states any change allowed between two concrete panels can be considered as a trip hazard. What we do, if there's nothing wrong with the concrete panel at all, we'll actually go into a full sidewalk inventory of the areas specified, and we'll work with mayors, city councils, quite a bit of folks. And just to improve that area, it's a proactive measure for the residents to be able to improve the sidewalk, which builds commerce, uh, it builds, uh, everything from fitness to even interactions in the local community, to even tourism itself. Uh, we work heavily, a lot of folks, we're Tree City USA folks, uh, sidewalk safe routes to school folks, so we do quite a bit of work. But in essence, since we own the technology, we actually have the capability to be able to do, come in, do a footprint of an area within just a day or two, whereas it would take a regular contractor a week to take care of, affecting any kind of vehicular traffic flow, any kind of side, or any kind of walking within the sidewalk, or any kind of commerce or merchant activity. Uh, that's one of the great things about us. Another thing you might have noticed is that our focus is footprint, footprint, footprint. And what I'm going to go over real quick is that you notice, a lot of small, we're, our machines are very, very small. Um, not only are they small, you're not going to see any unsightly issues with, uh, having sidewalks closed, it's actually why we do a lot of work with the City of Bardstown, which is named the most beautiful small town in America, uh, several times, we've actually done about three quarters of their downtown area. Um, just some examples of some problems, this is different concrete across the nation, uh, just to give you some answers. That's, what this, the purpose of the slide is essence, saying is that no matter what kind of concrete, we're actually have a, a, a solution for, especially here in Kentucky. Uh, you can see the concrete there for Louisville is actually, uh, s, uh, number three, so. This is actually demonstration, we actually did a demonstration with Mayor Porter, uh, several weeks back, and if that is a little bit difficult to read, let me see if I can sharpen that up a little bit. Uh, we did a demonstration over there, and I, please, I encourage any folk, anybody to come out, uh, to take a look at it, over at three, four, one Court Street. Uh, we, we took a look at a trip hazard that was one inch at the highest point, and flush, as you can see by the pictures, at the lowest point, across the sidewalk. Uh, from start to finish, and the mayor, actually, thank you, sir, for, uh, attending our demonstration, uh, from start to finish was ten minutes. That includes cleanup, and that repair site is actually immediately ready for use as soon as that, uh, repair is complete. Uh, a lot of folks will ask about the lack coloration, that's actually the original color of the concrete when it was first laid, as the sun hits that and it weathers, it'll actually weather back to a perfect match. Uh, that's the one thing that we can kind of guarantee, it's made from the same pot of flour as the rest of that concrete panel, as opposed to ripping out a panel and have kind of a chiclets look to the sidewalk itself. Uh, just a couple of things that cause uneven con, whoops, excuse me, guys, just a couple of things that cause uneven concrete panels that we do quite a bit of work with. Excuse me. Obviously, tree roots, a lot of folks will say, well, if you cut a concrete panel, um, and it's caused by the rising of tree root, is that not going to continue? Why not just lift the panel, replace the panel, and saw off the root? Um, our brists have always commented, once a root grows from a tree, and you chop it off, it, it's almost like the path of each resistance, the tree remembers which way that root grew, and it's actually going to continue to grow right back into that area. On average, our cost is about in, between a dollar twenty-five and a dollar fifty a square foot. So, for you folks who are very well aware of the cost of the square foot of concrete, that's actually extremely well below what the cost of pouring concrete, not to mention how much faster that we are. Ground settling, you have geological shifting, of course, once, one sidewalks are, you know, greater than ten years old, that pretty much goes away, so we are a permanent solution regarding in that regard, in that method. And one of the areas, we don't see it as much here in Kentucky, although we are in an area that we do see it, is the freezing and the thawing. Uh, typically, whenever we do surveys, we want to make sure we don't do it when it's as cold as it is outside. Uh, we actually have already done a survey of a small footprint that we wanted to at least show to the council and the mayor himself as this kind of a, as a sample as to what we, you know, if, if we were to get an opportunity to partner with the City of Paintful, how it would look, what, how long it would take, and what the cost would be. Uh, obvious reasons to fix, the big one is obviously ADA compliant liability avoidance, it's a proactive measure for residents to not have to worry about the sidewalks. The city has a tendency to take care of the asphalt and the roads, why not the main, uh, methods of, of, uh, transportation, especially for the senior citizen community, the blind community, and the handicap community as well. Uh, we consider ourselves an asset management company. What we do is we partner with municipalities, come in and help manage the asset of your concrete. And we want to make it so that we're as, as easily accessible as if we were in an office right next to you. And that's, one of the gentlemen's, one of our clients, that says, we, we have an immediate response if there's ever any issues. But one of the great things about ADA that states is that you must have, ADA, the American Disability Act, which is a law passed by the George H.W. Bush administration, and actually enacted by the Clinton administration in nineteen ninety-two, or correction, ninety-four, states that every municipality must have a sidewalk transition plan. So, by actually us coming out and doing a survey, it actually allows- it actually allows visibility for the council, and for the mayor, and for decision makers to be able to see, here are the areas that we have. And it's not a sidewalk transition totality. It's a sidewalk transition plan, meaning that we work with municipalities over a long span. And so what we're interested in is a partnership, where we slowly, methodically go through and work. We've done about, some of the municipalities that are roughly the same size as Paintsville, we've actually done about ninety-three percent of the sidewalks in the City of Litchfield. Uh, we've done about seventy-five percent of the sidewalks in the City of Glasgow, Kentucky. Uh, we've done four projects over Maria, Kentucky, um, the college and the city itself. So we consider ourselves a partner. We're not a traditional contractor that's just interested to come in, do a contract, and move along to the next. One of the things that I like to say, one hundred percent of our repairs are ADA compliant. Our technicians don't go out there and just, you know, oh, that looks like a trip hazard, we'll just kind of bevel that off. We actually measure each and every single trip hazard, as you'll see here in a second with the copy of the proposal that's on y'all's desk. And we actually go far back on a one to twelve ratio for, meaning for every inch and rise, we go back twelve inches and cut a straight line. The, the Department of Justice has defined that as a, a legal change in level on an existing walkway. So that is the legality that allows us to be able to come and cut the sidewalks and say that is an ADA compliant slope. And it's actually a very small and gradual slope. And please, I do encourage you, go up to the demonstration site that we did at 341 Court Street. Uh, I think you'll be very impressed. The biggest thing I wanted to just kind of point out is just the goals. Every one of our clients really benefit from this right here. It's a proactive measure that the local government can take to ensure the safety of the residents and the sidewalks, and to also have a budget or fiscally conscious mind regarding doing that. Uh, some last things I wanted to just kind of point out. Our methodology, other ways to repair uneven panels, I'm gonna go over those. One of the most common ways is doing asphalt patches. One of the things about, it is cheaper, it's extremely cheap. The one thing that you're gonna see about asphalt patching, however, is that the first freeze that you're gonna have, such as today, it's gonna start to crumble in your roadway and pop off eventually. We consider that a very temporary solution. It's quick and easy, low skill, and expensive. Um, there is no guarantee of ADA compliance with that. The next way is the, basically using what we call a grinder or a scabbler. Those folks come in, traditionally grinders do not have a dust abatement system. Uh, during the demonstration, please get an opportunity to ask Mayor Porter, we actually turned off the vacuum to simulate what grinding would be, and it caused a great bit of mess of dust. Once it does that, it can really start to affect the traffic flow through there. If it's in front of a store, it might affect the commerce and upset the business owner. Excuse me, guys. And it would be a scenario where it would start to really receive a lot more complaints. Again, one of the great things about that is that we actually work hand in hand a lot with OSHA folks regarding dust, and we're actually PBA compliant dust abatement system. We flew our, our dust abatement system out to California and passed their test, since they have the toughest, uh, level on the nation. That's why we can say we are actually nationally compliant. Uh, one of the last ones, pumping or mudjacking, where they basically drill a hole into the concrete panel and raise it up to the higher level of the other adjacent concrete panel. Um, this is actually what we call the most aesthetically pleasing, because you're literally using the original concrete without touching it and no risk and, and thank you, ma'am. Very nice of you. However, one of the things about it is, it takes a long time, and it's pretty much the same cost, just shy of the same cost in terms of removing and replacing and reporing a concrete panel. And then the obvious one, the replacement. Uh, I think we're all familiar with that. Time, it's the most expensive. Uh, you do get ADA compliance out of that. Aesthetically pleasing, but it is very hard to match panel to panel. Uh, and then our methodology, there are some pros and cons. Um, our speed, low impact, we guarantee ADA compliance. We have aesthetic, you're gonna avoid any kind of liability. It's inexpensive, environmentally friendly, since we do recycle all of our cut concrete, and the cost savings is unmatched. There are cons to our methodology. We offer it as a service. We've had several municipalities come and try to buy our machines. We don't sell our machines, we, we do offer it as a service. And unless somebody with a logo on this shirt has come and spoken to you before, you've never seen us before. We're actually the only folks in the country that have this technology. All right. Uh, the last thing I wanted to point out is what we came up with specifically for the City of Paintsville. I had an opportunity to meet Mayor Porter, and he allowed us the, the chance to come and actually do a survey, complimentary, of course. Since we're the only folks in the country who have this capability, nobody really knows who we are. So what we'd like to try to do is offer the ability to do a free survey. Uh, so we came over here, did a free survey with one of our teams. Um, upfront, our president and our CEO always wanna make sure that we brief our commitment summary. You're going to enjoy cost savings. And in the latter page of the proposal, you'll actually see what those cost savings are. And one of the things that we're extremely proud of is our US Green Building Council members stamp on the bottom left-hand corner, verifying that we are a green company, that we recycle our concrete. Uh, one thing I wanted to point out is you will get a detailed reporting. Um, this will qualify as a comprehensive sidewalk inventory of whatever footprint we systematically would work with if we were to, had the opportunity to partner with the City of Paintsville. So, and you're gonna see a level of detail that is unparalleled. This was a proposed overall footprint. It was actually along the main street in downtown Paintsville. And then we kind of broke it up into two sections. The western section is a green, and sorry I can't get that into more focus, folks. I apologize. And the green, whoop. You know what, I'm not gonna touch it. The, the section to the west is in green, and the section to the, uh, east is in blue.
Does the dividing line College Street?
Yeah. Uh, yes. And we received direct, uh, instructions from the mayor to make sure that we left off College Street. The project goals are to extend the usable life of the city's concrete assets, uh, eliminate the trip hazards, and identify all the panels in need of demolishing and replacing, or removing and replacing. So you'll see from West Street to College Street, or that green footprint, if you will, uh, you can kind of see the accumulation of trip hazards. One of the things that we do is, we'll actually come in, show you where all the trip hazards that need to be repaired. Uh, and I know it might be a little bit out of focus for those folks in the back, but we'll also point out the areas too, some of the things that we can't do anything about. Uh, for example, we can't do anything about cracking. Our technology doesn't do anything about cracking or any kind of excessive spalling, or if there's a missing concrete panel. All we do, we are the subject matter experts in trip hazard repair. But one of the great things about this, instead of trying to, uh, get a contractor to come in and replace all of this, you'll know with exact specificity where you need to go, the locations of where you have any issues with, and I know this seems a little blurry, so please do refer to your copies on the desk. But we'll know exactly where we need to go. Each one of these locations, actually, as our survey team came through, actually measured the highest point of the trip hazard, the lowest point, the feet in length across of the trip hazard, and the actual physical address that is associated with that trip hazard. So you're gonna be, so that makes us actually one hundred percent auditable at any time. Uh, at the conclusion of the project, then that's when we hand over that information. And that works as your comprehensive sidewalk inventory. Uh, here's another thing, too. Surveys are included as part of the project, which is, uh, that's one of the big cost savings that I love, a lot of our clients love. Uh, traditionally, what we quantified, uh, Main Street from West Street to College, uh, we quantified it as pretty much average for the Commonwealth of Kentucky for a municipality of this size and this age. So, uh, I wouldn't say one way or the other. Traditionally, you can kind of tell, everything that's in yellow is from a quarter inch to three-quarters of an inch, and everything that's in red is from three-quarters of an inch to two inches. Uh, meaning, everything yellow, we consider a less of a, more, less dangerous trip hazard than the red ones. An average street within the Commonwealth of Kentucky is about what you see right there, which is about an equal number of trip hazards between yellow and red. So it gives you kind of a macro point of view as decision makers assess the health of your sidewalks in this particular area of Paintsville. These would be the costs. We always never want, we never want our clients to feel like they're being funneled into a particular area. So we wanted to offer several price points, especially if this could be an opportunity for a pilot project. Um, just to kind of point out, what you see here too, for the western portion of the street, of Main Street, excuse me, that's in green, all, uh, all of the, um, the trip hazards, which would be from a quarter inch to two inches, to take care of that would be forty-one hundred and fifty-five dollars, which is all the pins, and we can take care of that in one to two days. Or if you wanted to do an option B, which is a more budgetary conscientious, uh, would be from three-quarters of an inch to two inches, which are just the red pins that you saw in the previous graphic. And you can see the amount right there. Cost savings analysis of that, based off of the average area or how much municipalities in this area of the Commonwealth typically pay per square foot. Um, and since we actually have a pretty comprehensive, in-depth inventory of the sidewalk, of the footprint itself of that area, um, we estimate that if you were to elect option A, which is a quarter inch to two inches, uh, which the cost would be four thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars, you'd actually be saving seven thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars if you were to elect to do the work yourself and come in and remove and replace. Keeping apples to apples, we know dollars are that, but we don't know how long it would take you. Uh, we know it would take us one day to come in and take care of that. It might take you a day, it might take you six months, we don't know. But we feel that, we're pretty quick about that, but it's not fair to compare. Uh, so the one things that we wanna make sure that we do mention are the dollars. Uh, we estimate about a sixty-four percent savings, uh, for option A. Option B, we estimate that we would save you one thousand six hundred and sixty dollars, which would be a thirty-two percent savings. This is the east, um, so pretty much same, a, a lot less severe, actually. We actually quantify this as, um, slightly above average compared to a different, or compared to municipalities of the same size as Paintsville, uh, which is great. Um, on the bottom left-hand corner in the ledge in there, you'll can see the classi, different classifications, or the little boxes with colors for crackings, spalling, any kind of trip hazard caused by utility, any missing panels, any kind of excessive heating, or any kind of multiple where you have cracking more than one. Excuse me, folks. And this is, as, as you can see, the different price points that we have for the blue footprint or the east side of, east of College Street footprint. Option A is two thousand seventeen, option B is fifteen thirty-seven and fifty. Again, option A, which is the left option, is every single one of the teardrops that you saw. Option B is just the red ones, which are the more severe ones, which are three-quarters of an inch to two inches. And there's a cost savings analysis. We fit, we, uh, we find a sixty-eight percent savings if you were to do option A of just the east footprint, um, which comes out to four thousand three hundred dollars savings. And option B was actually forty-five percent savings of one thousand two hundred and seventy and fifty cents. Lastly, uh, combined overall, project summary for the entire area. If we were to do both sides of west and of east, we can take care of all the trip hazards to make the sidewalks closer to ADA compliance, guarantee ADA compliance on every single one of the repairs, also have a complete inventory of that sidewalk from both sides, uh, and take care of that project in two days, two to three days, weather dependent. Uh, for a quarter inch to two inches, we can do that for six thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. Uh, if you were to do option B, we can take care of that in one to two days. Uh, and that's both footprints, and that would be for five thousand twenty-five dollars. And that's all trip hazards that are repairable through our method, methods, excuse me, for three-quarters of an inch to two inches. The cost savings analysis, uh, it's a sixty-six percent cost savings analysis for option A, which comes out to eleven thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents. And a thirty-three percent cost savings analysis, cost savings for option B, which is two thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. And please keep in mind, these numbers are conservative. Uh, Murray State University actually did a study on us that's independent of us, and I have no problem showing that up on the screen here in just a second if you wish. Excuse me, where we estimated we would cost save their campus sixty-eight percent, and actually came back and said seventy percent. So, uh, we've partnered with Apple Computers to help, uh, create this survey software technology that we're extremely lucky and extremely proud of. We're the only ones who actually have it. But keep in mind, we actually had technicians literally walk through those sidewalks, get on the knee, and literally measure how high trip hazard was. So we have all the data, and the software is incredibly, uh, you might have seen a bit of a glimpse of it when you saw the little pins on the video. Uh, lastly, this is the difference. Uh, on the left is a picture of grinding, which is pretty much a traditional way across the nation how they take care of trip hazards for panels that are undamaged. Uh, it looks like cat scratches to me, to be honest with you. They cannot go all the way, typically, they cannot go all the way to the, to the curb itself, and aesthetically, it is not pleasing. Plus, they cannot guarantee ADA compliance. The picture on the right is actually the after picture of the one on the left. We're able to go all the way up to the curb. In fact, Bardstown in particular, I mentioned them earlier, they love the fact that we can actually go all the way up to the edge, because there's a lot of homes who have historical wooden fences literally up a butt against the, um, sidewalk itself. And you saw our technicians, it is very much a craft. Uh, they'll get actually right up against it. So, and that's actually one of the reasons why a lot of universities, we've done about fifty-five percent of the sidewalks in the University of Louisville, and we've done quite a bit of the University of Kentucky sidewalks, because they have a product to sell. I mean, it's a school, but ultimately, they have a product to sell, and they have to be able to also protect their students as they're paying a room and board. And one of the big thing for them is not only that, but they, with that product to sell, we have to be able to go in there, take care of the work quickly, efficiently, and legally correct, but with aesthetics in mind, and get out. And that's why we do quite a bit of work with universities. But that's what our process looks like. And just an example of what one of our cuts are. This concludes my presentation. Uh, I'll turn the lights on at this time and field any questions anybody might have from the council or the public themselves. And gentlemen, thank you so much for your patience for sliding over.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good job. Just, uh, pointing out a couple of things. One is that, uh, one trip probably is more than the sixty-one hundred and seventy-two dollars. Jeff, you, you defended, you defended several of those trips that our insurance companies, company has paid off on. The other thing you might ask yourself, why Main Street? We're within, uh, days, have been for two, three years, seems like, on starting our other sidewalk project, which will repair, replace, actually, uh, we've got a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant to replace sidewalks on third, a lot of, part of Third Street, Elm Street, Church Street, and West Street. Hundred and seventy-five thousand. Uh, it's a no-match, no-match grant. And, uh, we've been, uh, we've been struggling with the state to try to get that project bid for some time. And, uh, every, seems like every month, we've got one more thing that they come up with that we'd rather do. So we're, they're, they're trying to decide right now if the, uh, the bid process has got to specify certain, uh, percentage of, uh, of, uh, minority subcontractors or something, something of that nature. So anyway, they're, they're, they're working on the, the language of the bid, bid specifications, everything else is approved.
Can any of that grant money be, be used towards something like this?
No. No, but I will say this, that, uh, certainly, certainly, uh, road aid money can. And we've, we've got a little, we've got some road aid money that's still available to us. So we could probably work that into this year's budget. But I would, I would, the spot that he did was, uh, in front of Conley Cotrell. That's where that, where that repair was made. Uh, you're welcome to go by and look at it.
On the corner street side?
On the, uh, yeah, on the corner there, just in front of the office, just right in front of the office.
I guess, I guess it probably is a stupid question, but you got, you got a stupid one too? Well, let me ask my stupid one first. Do we, does the city own and have liability to all the sidewalks within the city limits of Paintsville? I mean, absolutely. Do we?
I thought it was landowners.
I would think the landowner, the, I mean, you know.
There's an ordinance, there's an ordinance that says the landowner has responsibility to maintain, but in reality, if there's liability, it falls on the city.
Oh, really? Huh, so.
It's your, it's your right way, it's a public thoroughfare, just up the street.
We've been, we've been, we've been involved in several lawsuits for tripping falls on sidewalks.
Really?
Yeah.
And just another question, and maybe, uh, maybe you start inventing your stupid question. But, uh, do we get, I mean, uh, is there much, do you, at City Hall, get people saying, you know, hey, these sidewalks are, you know, I'm jogging and.
Well, the question comes, is it a, is it unreasonable? Well, the question is, is it unreasonable, you know, I mean, we're talking an inch or, I mean, I think it's a good argument to that, anybody should be able to see that and take care of themselves and avoid it.
Okay.
But it doesn't stop somebody from suing you and saying it wasn't a reasonably dangerous condition. You know, so, but at the same time, you have a good defense to, hey, you know, this is a, anything's a tripping hazard. That chair is a tripping hazard, anything's a tripping hazard.
Yeah, yeah.
But it isn't reasonably dangerous.
Yeah, okay.
So.
I didn't realize we had, I didn't realize we had the responsibility to the sidewalks, to all the city of Paintsville, everywhere?
Any thoroughfare.
Any thoroughfare. So down you go.
Same thing as the same street, right?
Yeah, yeah. So it's a, it's a common occurrence and you ask about, do people, do people mention it?
Yeah.
Particularly the senior citizens group mentions it.
Oh, from the high rise?
From the high rise, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And Regina's not here, Regina, Regina mentions it all the time, cause she walks her.
Oh, I tried not to walk.
He said, is yours a crack?
No, well, if there is, I'm sorry.
Is yours like an upheaval or if the concrete is, exactly what is yours doing? I saw those.
Yes, ma'am. So what it is, if there is a crack within the actual panel itself and it's creating a trip hazard, we can cut that for it to be an ADA compliant and not, and remove the tripping hazard itself. And, and we work closely with the KLC too. In fact, we're about to sign a master service agreement in each and every single year with the KLCIS, where actually they do a matching grant to anybody who works with us, to any KLCIS member, I should say, I'm sorry, that does a matching grant, they will match. They'll pick up fifty percent of the cost because of, they've seen the work nationwide, but also within Kentucky itself, and they see how the quick reduction of tripping fall incidences, especially from the loss control field reps that they have, all versus the cost is phenomenal. I mean, the first incident for an ADA issue, you're looking at a seventy-five thousand dollar possib- possibility of a fine and then each thereafter is a hundred and fifty thousand. Now, is that enacted often? No, ma'am, it's not, because usually folks will go out of court and take care of that outside. But for the cost of being able to take care of all of Main Street for, I believe it was sixty-one hundred, sir. That's, and being able to do that in two days, two to three days, weather dependent, we think that's phenomenal price point. So then that's all we do, ma'am.
Would we do that before we started the other sidewalk?
Wouldn't have to, I mean, you know, it could, it could be done simultaneously or before or after, it wouldn't.
I mean, it doesn't matter.
It's a great operation, ma'am. In fact, with the city of Frankfurt, we work with Mr. Bradley, who is the Public Works Director there, as well as Deputy Mr. Gray. And when the city of Frankfurt, each and every single year, they actually have a paving list. When they do their paving through the list, and every client uses this differently. But one of the things that they were fond of us sharing is the fact that when they do their paving list, they repave roads, they also do the sidewalks. And they call us their leadoff hitters. We'll actually go through, survey the sidewalks, do our work, then turn around and hand our survey information directly to the contractors. That saves time and efficiency and money for the municipality because if anybody is used to ordering concrete, you always overorder a little bit, so at the end of the day, they're like, you know, I got all this extra concrete. Well, that wouldn't be a necessity with us. So, so we work pretty much hand in hand with the contractors and also, again, we don't, there are certain things that we can't take care of, such as spalling or missing panels, but you'll know exactly where they're at. And that gives you an exact inventory of what the health and condition of your sidewalks are.
I'd actually be curious to hear from Joe, I mean, or, I mean, do we have, you know, I mean, I know they put up a price comparison of their service versus, you know, typical, you know, ramping it or, you know, doing something else. But I mean, maybe has, has Joe looked at it and, you know, what, what our internal already personnel could do?
But as far as replacing the sidewalk, you talking about?
Not the, not the, what he's talking about.
Hey, you're talking about a hundred dollars a yard.
We're about a dollar twenty-five, a dollar fifty square foot, sir, on average. Depends on the.
The yard.
What kind, you said you have a.
You're saying, I mean, like a panel there is what, four foot by four foot typically? Yeah, yard, the concrete, so.
He's talking about doing that in a couple of.
That's for the, that's for the concrete plus the labor, I guess.
I said, I said, you said you offer a warranty, what kind of warranty would you report us to?
So we actually have professional structural engineers that are actually independent of us. Who state that we actually, we've never had a single repair fail nationwide. So, now we'll only cut up to two inches. Some of our clients have asked us to cut above two inches. For example, City of Louisville asked us to cut up to two and a half inches. Your standard form of concrete is four inches thick. Those professional structural, excuse me. Those professional structural engineers have stated that we can actually cut up to half of that standard concrete form on three thousand PSI concrete and still actually maintain that sixteen, sixteen hundred pound performance that minimum sidewalks need for daily use. Now, if you cut two and a half inches, that, if you knew the math, it's an inch and a half of concrete left. We don't warranty those cuts. However, to date, all of our clients who have ever cut above two and a half inches, we have never had a repair fail.
Are, are you saying that up to two inches, if, if you, if, if your repair fails or it cracks or whatever?
And even then, even if we note a heaving that's saying, let's say we have a heaving of three inches or two, that's three inches, we won't mark it down for repair, we'll just put, hey, this is outside of our envelope. We wanna let you know about it, but at least you know about it, and so now you know exactly where it is, so then you can turn and hand that data to the contractor.
Yeah, just what you said, Bob, what? If it does fail though, if you cut it two inches or less and it fails, what do you do about it if it was to fail?
Oh, we replace the panel, sir.
Okay, so you do replace it?
Yes, sir. Sorry, I didn't answer that part.
Joe, what were you gonna say, I'm sorry. Did you have something else you wanted to add?
I love to do his work. He does, he does do good work. He moved it down.
Then you're biased.
People wouldn't do it, you know, wheelchairs and so on, and get dropped, but.
Well, I'm sure coming down Main Street, people from the high rise and some of their carts are.
Are we taking all the liability of the sidewalk completely? Because of the other issues, Ray. Will we be responsible for the sidewalk to bear on? Or would never be.
Well, according to council, we're, we're responsible already. Which is news to me. Well, I lived on Second Street, our sidewalk busted up and I remember calling City Hall and they said, well, better call and get some concrete for it.
Yeah, we'll try that first.
If I may add too as well, we've actually helped several municipalities actually reappropriate the responsibility, working with the mayor and the city councils, to reappropriate the responsibility of the sidewalks. Because what they have found ultimately, with the vision of the long term, is commerce suffers. You have, the, the overall tourism perhaps could suffer by not keeping the sidewalks. Now, obviously under budgetary constraints, you have to prioritize. But to be honest, the vision that we see from residents, the number one feedback we always get is, city fixes the roads, why don't they do the sidewalk as well? And majority with the increase in senior citizens, senior citizens becoming more and more independent and the advent of social media and smartphones, a lot of people frankly are just not paying attention when they're walking. And that's why we've seen an increase in rise within tripping fall hazards specifically. And not coincidentally, since two thousand and five, which is around the same time the item really took popularity.
Even though, Jeff, you say we're, you know, that the city has responsibility for sidewalks. Let's see where Joe's going from, cause if we start doing this work, then everybody's gonna say, you know, I'll leave my sidewalk fixed. You know what I'm saying? Where they've not been used to doing it, you know?
I don't wanna keep Joe on the clear.
I understand, I know what you're saying.
That's good thinking, Jeff.
And we've worked with several of our clients throughout the span of five, six, seven years, slowly but surely, once a year. We've actually had clients who've had to skip a year because of budgetary constraints, but we'll come back and say, alright, what areas can we work with, partner with here? And ultimately, well, for example, the city of Litchfield, we ended up building about ninety-three percent of their sidewalks and it was under twenty thousand dollars.
Do you do it for profit, resident or?
No, no, ma'am.
No, no, you just do it for the.
Yes, ma'am, we're commercial in terms of municipalities. We don't, if say Joe wanted to have us come over.
No, Joe wants to stay in the clear.
Absolutely.
In Litchfield, did they chop it up into different sections? Is that how they did it?
They did.
Over town?
Yes, sir, they did. In fact, they started with a footprint. Their footprint was a, Mayor Thomason asked us to do one block radius of the town square and then a two block radius, and he wanted to know everything from a quarter to two, half to two, and three quarters to two. So we actually had six different price points, similar to what we've offered y'all, to show you. And ultimately, they ended up choosing the two block radius, a quarter to two, which they loved, and that was the initial footprint. And then the next year after that, we just kept building, building, building. And that really coincides with the ADA plan, sir. It's a sidewalk transition plan. If there were to be, heaven forbid, a tripping fall incident, then you can turn and say, we are working towards it. Here is our plan so far, here was the first footprint, next year we're planning on doing this, and this, and this. And it shows an active, an active measure of constantly being proactive instead of reactive.
I guess it's just Main Street.
This is just Main Street, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Sixty some hundred, hundred cent?
Sixty one hundred, I don't have.
Sixty one seventy-two, I think.
Well, sorry, folks, that's a computer generated.
So I don't know how you all feel, but I'm, I kinda like this guy, I'm for that.
Well, I'd love to fix them.
You put that in a form of emotion?
Yeah, I'll put that in form of emotion, that we go ahead and.
Thank you, sir.
Do the, do the sixty-one hundred seventy-two dollars, that's out there.
I'll say, I'll put motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? When can it be done?
Yes, sir. It can be done.
Make it so.
We actually can cut in snow. We developed the technology to cut in snow, believe it or not. We actually did the Mormon temple for the Commonwealth of Kentucky, which is their architecture. And we did that in snow. We actually developed the technology years ago, so. Mayor, we can, we can probably schedule the project in February if that's okay with you.
Okay, get with it.
Any other questions for us afterward?
No, it's getting late.
Thank you for your time, folks.
Nothing further, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion with adjourn.
Take it.
Stand adjourned.